All this meeting to order. Invitation, please. Reverend, please stand for the invitation. Thank you. Introduce yourself.
Pastor Riley from the Gulf Shore Church here in Benita. Lord, as we come to you tonight, as this meeting gets underway, we just come truly with thanks. We thank you for the privilege and the freedom that we have to even come and have a meeting like this. We thank you for the freedom that we have to express our own thoughts and to know that they will be considered. Lord, thank you again for this beautiful place where we live. So just give your guidance and direction and wisdom to each of our elected officials as they make these decisions so that we can just continue to have the wonderful place that we have. For, Lord, we just thank you, that we consider always that we are blessed to be a blessing, in Jesus' name.
Thank you.
Amen. Pleasure of allegiance on three, one, two, aye. Pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the power for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I have a city clerk taking a roll call, maybe.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Here.
Councilwoman Purdon?
Here.
Councilwoman Carr?
Here.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Here.
Councilman Corey?
Here.
Councilman Foulak?
Here.
Councilman Forbes?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Ford. Okay. Any changes on the agenda? I don't know of any. Okay. Mayors, welcome. You're all, I'm so glad to see you take your time to come and see us. We represent you. You elected us from six different areas in the city to represent you. If you have a problem or a concern, you can contact your city's councilperson. If they can't satisfy you, you can call me at area 239-213-8345. Welcome your phone calls. We're here to help. We're public servants. Okay, we do a public comment. Do you have any public comments for this evening? Here we go. Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you. I promised it'll be only about two minutes out of my four. Out of the priories which the city wishes to address is there significant absences.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Okay. I am Joe Gallagher. I live 10290 Indiana Street here in Benita. Out of the priories which the city wishes to address, there are significant absences. Economic development will be severely handicapped without affordable housing. Nowhere is that mentioned as a goal. That's in terms of the city manager's agenda items. Nowhere is, okay, the city's bonus density program has not resulted in any affordable housing. Developers should be offered the opportunity to build more units in expensive locations if supporting houses in lower-cost areas like Rosemary Park. There's a two-and-a-half-acre lot which could use developer help as well as some of the American Rescue Funds that the city has received. I am a president of nonprofit, I own a house seeking to build rental housing. One Florida municipality spent the majority of its COVID, aka American Rescue Funds, on housing. Community development should seek ways to help nonprofits build housing as a partnership. Okay, it's great that community service is back at the Lyles. Hopefully, greater consideration will be given to using the old library as a senior center. More seniors will be moving to Benita, and not all of them into gated communities. Are we adequately planning for our future? Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else, please? Oh, here we go.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff for the record Dwight Esmond Paradise Road area. Talk about the golf course first. I want to say congratulations to Nick and his team from Barren Collier. They made you an offer you can't refuse, a deal you'll feel good about. I'm sure it's a good deal for Barren Collier, too, but they could have asked for more or given less, and other developers might have. Could salespeople discover a problem the buyer wants solved? Then they offer a solution their product or service can provide. The city needed a stormwater project and didn't want to borrow money to finance it, so Barren Collier solved your problem. You may not know that Nick used to be the deputy county manager in Collier County, and he helped get the county to buy the closed Golden Gate Golf Course. Wish it had been employed by the city or county in 2018, when the Waldrup and Beaver reports said this golf course should be a stormwater water quality project with a regional park. Back then, we might have been able to buy all the land for 6.1 million and be well on our way to perhaps even a finished first-rate water retention project. We might have a smaller, different version of Lakes Park with walking and biking pathways up 20 or 30-foot hills. I hope you really know what you're getting for our money above and beyond what Barren Collier would have been required to do based upon the 1980 WMD permit. I finally got my answers, and I don't know if what we're getting is worth what we'll pay, but at this point, it's the best deal we're going to get. The latest Singh-Hoffin estimate has this project saving 21 homes from flooding, but 32 still flood. If we get 20 inches of rain, 83 will flood. In either case, it probably won't be your home or mine. It doesn't surprise me, but it still disappoints that this vote on a huge issue was announced only five days ago. But as someone recently said about all local governments, by the time of public comment, the decision has been made. And until an item is on the agenda, the public has to wait to the end of a meeting to make comments, and by then, you're all ready to go home. I doubt there will be FEMA money for this project, but there may be other money available. But it is our problem to solve. I've estimated that it'll take 40,000 dump trucks to haul out the dirt from the lakes. I know that seems a lot, so I hope you will ask for an estimate. Plus, we'll have all the trucks for the construction material. Paradise and Cockle Shell are dangerous right now, and they need to be improved. Will it take someone getting hurt? I hope the roads can be improved as part of this project. Barren Collier will do a good job. They are a reputable company, and it is in their best interest. I hope they will listen to the area residents and work together to improve the community. Their new homeowners will benefit. This is the best deal you're going to get, so take it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? There we go. Come on, hurry up. You always sit in the back and you hand her on up. Come on, buddy.
Ben Herschinson, Avonlea Drive, Benita Springs, President of Fair Winds Homeowners Association and Chair of the Local Area Steering Committee. Tonight, the city council will decide if the stormwater management plan for the golf course and country club area will be approved. What brought us to the point was the work of many individuals over several years. I had to take a moment to recognize Assistant City Manager Matt Feeny, who coordinated the many meetings of these, of those involved in actually putting the plan together. Singh-Hoffin Associates, Pennisa Engineering, Gray Robinson Attorney, Barren Collier Companies, South Auto Water Management District, city staff, and members of the community. From time to time, I would share, from my position, I would share information with our city councilor, Chris Corey, just to make sure that we may have had some different items, items that we disagreed with, but we wanted to share information back and forth, so he knew what I was doing and that we could get an idea of what the information, the latest information was based upon our meetings with the steering committee with people from Barren Collier. To me, this proposal represents the only comprehensive, integrated plan for stormwater management to be shared with this group or any city council since the golf course closed in 2006. I believe it was last year when Singh-Hoffin and Associates made an excellent presentation entitled Spring Creek, Benita Springs Golf Course Flood Improvement Phase One. And from that, I think, has come an awful lot of good things. Many stood at this podium over the years since the golf course closed and even perhaps before that and talked about the chronic flooding problem in the area. This is the first time, and it's such a comprehensive and integrated plan has been put forth, the council. I've always believed, over the years, my own experience, when the private sector can sit down with people from the public sector, a lot of good things could happen. There are trade-offs, of course. Anybody who's ever been involved in a negotiation, that's how you do it. I wish that could happen in Washington, D.C., but thank heaven, we live here in a community where you can do this. This is the first time that we've had the opportunity to really put forth a plan to solve the area flooding. There are trade-offs, as I just said, but again, the whole purpose of having a discussion is to find the best solution for the majority of those involved. Yes, there were those, and I respect them, who oppose any more development in this particular area. But the time comes when problems need to be resolved, the talking has to stop, and I think we're at that point. Barren Collier Companies has arranged with Pulte to build, construct 20, I think, 250 to 300 residential units. Many years, over the many years, people have tried to purchase that golf course. I'm not going to spend time talking about the various efforts, but the past is what it is, the past. Either we're going to do something about the area flooding this time around, or we're going to still kick the can down the road. We started off with, Barren Collier with over 600 homes. Now we're down to 250 to 300. Quite a reduction in the scope of the project. In the end results, I think the benefits are going to allow people in the golf and country club area not having to worry about water lapping at their back door. To me, that is a good trade-off. Having been involved over the years, I am absolutely thrilled to be able to say that my own homeowners association supported this plan by unanimous vote. They very seldom voice any opinion. So folks, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and the members of the council, please vote to support this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Council. Council. It's a pleasure to stay here and speak to you.
You got your name on there?
I'm Bob Dejalarmo, 25571, Fairway Dunes. We have 80 homes adjacent to the golf course. We have a lot of wood in the fire here, along with Cypress Plantation 1 and Cypress Plantation 2. What I'd like to say is, I've been here many times, standing before the board with a lot of other companies that wanted to purchase the land and do something with the land. Finally, we have Barren Collier here, which is a really good outfit for us, because I know they're going to do the right thing. They want, they've always left, anywhere they've developed, a legacy. It's always been a good legacy, and they want to do what's right, and they don't try to sell homes in an area where it's just a dump. They don't do that. These are going to be nice homes. They're going to be in a beautiful area. It's really going to, it's going to bring our whole area up. It's going to bring my comps up and my neighbors' comps up. What I'd like to say is, though, we were going to be developing more lakes on this project. Now, it kind of, because I don't have information on it, I don't know how these lakes are going to, whether they're going to silt up, if they're going to get greener, or is it going to be stinking, are there going to be vegetation in them that happens up like in Cape Coral? Are we going to have mosquitoes from it? All these kinds of things, you know, you really don't know about right now. However, I've been told that the mosquito control district will take care of the mosquitoes and the, and our stormwater people are going to take care of the lakes and going to look at the lakes and stuff like that. We bought our property, and a lot of my neighbors bought our properties way back when we bought them. I've been here almost 35 years now, year-round, because of the wonderful view there. Now, I'm giving up that. However, I'm happy with what, what has been shown to me, what they're going to do with the property. It should have, could have, would have for a lot of people, and a lot of people stand up here, and they have a lot of passion. What you should have done, what we could have done, we never really had the tax base from the counting to get, to give us a lot more money than what we have to do things. So it's taken us more and more time to do a lot of our projects than if we had the money. But I'm really satisfied, I'm really excited about where we're going with this thing, even though I'm going to be losing my view and my neighbors are going to lose their view. We're excited about it. We're actually going to get down to the time, we're going to break ground on this thing, and they're going to do something with this area, because the way it's sitting there now, it takes a lot of maintenance, mowing it. Of course, the birds and the, some of the, the nature there is not going to like it. Well, they're going to, maybe they're going to like the water, I don't know, but they're not going to like their trees to be gone. But I'm still excited about it, and I think we should, as a group, recognize what we're going to be getting. We're not really losing that much, but we're getting a whole lot more than what we're losing. So, you know, I would say, think twice and really think, we're going to really be getting a lot more than what we ever thought we could get. So thank you so much for everybody's hard work, including Barren Collier, and the people that I was on the steering committee with. My wife and I, we've worked in Fort Myers Beach with the Rotary Club, working in gutting houses. We were over in Sanibel, doing chainsaw work over there, a lot of vegetation, and seeing what it is to live on a barrier island. But here in the city of Benita, we're very fortunate with this past storm. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? There we go.
Mr. Mayor, while he's coming up, I might as well just, I just add for the mosquito question, in addition to mosquito control, both the developer and the city have the right to maintain the ponds. So if one party is not maintaining the ponds, we have the right, not the obligation, to go in and to clean them up, because they are an interconnected system. So I just want to put that on the record.
Who's that again now?
If the question comes up about whether the ponds are being maintained, including the developer-retained ponds, the city has the right to step in and maintain them.
I thought we owned the ponds.
We are acquiring some ponds. There are other ponds that are going to be part and parcel of the homeowners association. We have the ability, under the agreement, to come in, clean those ponds up as well, and to charge back those costs.
The city's responsible for the other ponds.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmen. Probably somebody, an older mayor knows me from day one. The first time we approached this committee on a golf course, and we were a golf course community, knowing back in them days. And we sort of furthered away from that now, and now we're in a development area, which...
Excuse me, sir, I'm sorry, like you said...
You gotta go through me.
Okay.
Just burnt out, please.
Please, please, please.
Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Could you identify yourself for the record?
Grant Lundberg. I live at 25174 Gulf Lake Circle, Benita Springs, in the heart of the golf course, with 65 homes that is covered by the golf course with a lake in the back. And this is one of the things that all the people, when I was on a committee, when we formed, that came to the city, asked the city to buy the golf course. We did not succeed in that point, and that, and then we went, we went with FEMA, and we've talked with FEMA, lending money to the city. Then we talked about the city making it into a parkway, how the front nine, the back nine, how it could unulate with sidewalks and things. While we're at a point now, the people that live in these areas, a lot of them have moved out, but we have new people with families and things like this, kids, dogs, bus stops that come up the street on Paradise. When I first moved in there in 1949, we had two kids picked up. Today, we have 21 picking up in front of the golf course, where palm trees are laying over the walkways yet from the storm, and debris laying all around, and yet the people are still concerned what we're going to live with in the future when they hear lakes being there and ponds being here, runoff being there. I grant you, I was on the storm sewer committee here at Benita Springs when it first became a city with Mayor Paul Pass. So I know a little bit about the storm sewer situation and everything, and I'm glad that we're on top of that, the way it's going to work. I'm all for that there, but I'm also for our citizens, what's happening to their backyards. And the traffic on Paradise is terrible. Mailboxes are getting knocked down. The blacktop is getting ripped from the edge to the middle by 22 inches, and between the blacktop and the public safety walk is only 18 inches of grass. Imagine two buses picking up kids and having to deal where one of them has to get off the road to get up and down Paradise. Along with all the construction that's coming in the future, are we going to be able to handle that? And that's all I have. Like I say, I'm speaking for a lot of community people, and thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Herb Nelson. I live on Cockle Shell Drive. My wife and I have been here 23 years. I started out remembering how this thing started, and now I've had the honor of serving on the golf course steering committee. And I've seen this thing start from nothing to where we're at today. The old statement about the ship has sailed. Well, the ship is sailing, and it's time to make sure we got plenty to keep her going. I really and truly support the program. I have to say this about Barren Collier. I've worked with a number of developers over my time period. These guys are tops. They listened to what we asked. Where they could, they gave; where they couldn't, they didn't. And they're good business people, and I, you, the city knows this. And so let's just carry on, and let's do the job right. And I really thank you very, very much. I'm so happy that we can voice our opinions and we can say what we're in this world, in this country.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.[1263.61][1263.61][applause] Yes, sir. We hold down the applause. That inhibits the next speaker, maybe. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Brad Cyphers. I live off of Wood Ibis on Divot Drive. So I, like I said, this is kind of a done deal. We know this is all going to be happening. My only request or concern, right now, the plan shows that the access to both the south and the north parcel are both going to be off Paradise and nothing off Cockle Shell. I would request that they change that slightly so that the access to the south parcel come off Cockle Shell to take some of the load off Paradise. There's going to be, instead of having all the traffic go on Paradise, it would be nice if they took that entrance on the, from the, on the south parcel, from the Paradise side over to the Cockle Shell side, just move a couple houses in your plans there. And I think that would make a big difference in evening out some of the traffic there. Also, my, I agree with the concerns people have about the traffic on Paradise while all this construction is going on. Are we going to be widening the road before the construction? I think that that would be a good idea. That would, that would help a lot, because that road is too narrow when all those dump trucks and stuff are going up and down the road. So that would be my biggest concern. So just a short...
Thank you.
Brief constant comment. Appreciate it. Thanks, Chris.
Brad. Anyone else, please? Okay, I guess we can move on. Proclamations and presentations? We have none tonight? Okay, good. Now, we're on the consent agenda, which is developed by the city staff. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
A second.
Any comments? We have a vote, please?
Well, we have a comment.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry.
Just quick, I, the buyout parcel for the voluntary home buyout program, I think it's just awesome. I mean, this is a consent agenda item for us, but this is, you know, kind of the beginning of us being able to take care of those houses in those areas. So though it's consent agenda, I felt it was noteworthy, so I wanted to mention it. And then I just wanted to compliment Nicole on the Envirostruck contract. I think, you know, if you remember, we thought it was going to be like 2.5. I think it came in at 1.9, and Envirostruck has done a great job on the first set of fields. So they're a great company, and it came in under contract, and, you know, Nicole quietly gets another win, so I just wanted to bring that up. Thanks.
Okay, Jesse, after the consent agenda, there's a, there's a place on the agenda for comments like you just made?
Okay, so that, no? You misunderstand? I'll explain. So when you, opportunity for city council comments on consent agenda, what we just are about to vote on is the consent agenda. My comments were to C, D, and E, which are on the consent agenda, so that's specifically and exactly where I'm supposed to speak.
No, I thought you were supposed to speak after...
I understand why you think that, but no. That's not, it's okay.
City attorney?
I believe that the, the purpose of the opportunity of the city council is to allow the vote to proceed, approve the consent agenda, and then make comments on them at the end, unless they're pulled.
Okay, they weren't pulled. Okay.
Did you ask for comment on them?
After we vote on. Let's move on.
We'll move on, and we'll...
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Said aye.
Aye.
Councilman Foulak?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Okay, now, this would be the time for you to comment on that, unless you pull them.
I already made it, made the comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jesse. Okay, now we've got appointments at a local planning, council, local planning agency. Who introduces that, or what? Is that...
Yes, Mayor and Council, you have vacancies on the local planning agency. This is typically an item of the mayor and council. It's your, council's pleasure on how you'd like to move forward.
I motion to approve all.
Second.
Second, aye. Any comments? Roll call, please, Deb.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Foulak?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
And that was A and B?
No, no, sir, you need to do B. The next one is, is the appointment to the Outreach Advisory Committee.
Okay.
I believe you'll still have a vacancy after an appointment.
We have one person coming in, and we still have one vacancy. Do I like a motion, or...
Yeah, just comment on that.
The committee, right?
Uh, yes. Comment on that. The applicant is actually my new fiancee, as of, as of the 28th of last month. So as you can see by the resume, it is, it's pretty damn good, and I, I'm happy to discuss if anybody has any questions, but I just wanted to give that disclosure prior to us moving on that, so.
Very good, Jesse. I can make a motion?
I motion to approve, or I second the mayor's motion.
Okay, roll call, anybody to comment on it?
Congratulations, Jesse.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Foulak?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Okay, now we get to the city attorney's introduction.
Oh, nobody wants to hear about this one. Thank you, counsel. The item before you, I've got, we have two agreements before us. The first agreement is the, the conclusion of many years now of discussions on the Benita Golf Course and its future. At this point, what we have before you is a purchase agreement. Having considered other options, acquiring the property ourselves, contracting, looking at other possibilities for the property, what we have worked out is an agreement with the current property owner, where, as I think Mr. Esmond said earlier, they'll be developing their project, and that project will require some stormwater consideration. They have adapted their plans to meet the city's consultant plan of Singh-Hoffin design, and we would be acquiring the property in a finished state. So rather than acquiring property and having our own project to do construction while they are mobilized and doing the development of residential project, they will complete the improvements per our design and per the master concept plan with their entitlements, and then we will acquire those properties when they have been certified. So there's a stage acquisition, essentially one lake takedown per year. As we move forward, we will finalize the title and survey for each one, and they are committed to the pricing that's in this agreement. The second agreement is what I call an oversizing agreement. Essentially, while they are in place, there are, there are pieces of the project that are in the city's right-of-way, in our control, and in other properties adjacent to it, that we will be working to acquire the rights necessary to make sure the work all gets done at the same time. We retain the right to do the work ourselves, but because of the cost savings that we anticipate but because of the cost savings that we anticipate by having Baron Collier out there doing the work, we have expanded a separate agreement which allows them to complete the remaining stormwater work as well as additional work that may be available to us. So there's conversations about roadways. There are other possibilities that when they're out there, if there are things that they can do and they bid out and the pricing works out for us, we can authorize that work as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Comment. Nick, could you come up and ask? I have one question about, what was that name of the road? What was that again?
Paradise and Cockle Shell.
Cockle Shell. Are you familiar with that or?
Yes, sir. For the record, Nick Castle, we're with Baron Collier Companies. Was that the gentleman that asked us to relocate the road?
Something like that, yeah.
I think that design came from the city's consultant, where they're placing the water there. So what the good thing about what we're doing the project is all the construction traffic for the big lake will come off of Cockle Shell in that corner because that's the least amount of impact. What's left over, the residential development, that's the side that was reduced by about 150 homes, so it's the smallest piece. That will come off Paradise when we're done. But we will push the construction traffic to hit the least amount of homes when we're under construction.
Okay, you have no multi-family?
No, sir, there's no multi-family with the project.
Very good. Motion to approve is already a motion.
Already a motion, a second. Mr. Mayor?
Any other comment?
I just want to have one real quick question. There was a, when we got, we wanted to get the draft out as early as possible. There was a typo on page two of the agreement under section 2.3(c). And the copy that Debbie has for execution has it, but the public might not know. Parcel one should read parcel three. And the dollar amount, it is not 258,000, it's 3,258,000.
500.
Total math works.
3528.
3252.
A little different.
And there's no interest on this?
No, sir. I asked.
Stormwater utility is going to pay these bills?
The stormwater utility is the planned source of the funding.
So, Mayor and Council, that is something we are going to be, under my items, are going to be asking for a future stormwater workshop with you all. And we'll be going through all of the CIP projects at that time and how we intend to provide some opportunities for funding for those.
Yes.
There is opportunity for grants, possibly? He said something about.
Well, one of the items I'm going to go over, I think you all need to move forward on this item first before we can.
Okay, call, roll, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fulick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, councilmembers.
Okay.
Lot of work.
That's it for me.
Now, we got the city manager, is that right?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I believe on the phone, we have Hayden, our lobbyist. So he's there to listen in case you have any concerns, questions, or he likes any recommendations from him as well. We are at the point where we do need to provide the legislature with our, not only our position and talking points, which is the first page of the attachment that you see. We did receive direction from you to present those to the Lee County delegation, which we did. Since then, we've tweaked just a few of the words and made our number one priority Hurricane Ian recovery. Second to that, we do need to ask for our appropriations. We have been consulting with Hayden, but also with Representative Anna Botana. And we wanted to present some ideas for you and actually ask for that approval this evening. First off, we've discussed that in the past, one of the concerns about the funding that we had from the home elevation and home buyout is that there was some CDBG money that took a little bit longer for us to pursue. At this time, we've been moving along with closing on homes. We've actually moved through the majority of that money and we'll be tapping into the city's match of that program. So we have a very good match that could be supported for our request, our legislative request. So it's our recommendation that we ask for 5 million for home elevation and home buyout for not just the neighborhood of Quinn and Beryl Downs, but extend that to the city limits of any property that's below flood or is a vulnerable property or repetitive loss. So that would be the first one we would suggest. And the attached forms you see, those would be the forms we would fill out for the Senate and the House appropriations. The other recommendation we wanted to bring forward is our staff, Matt, had produced, give information that was produced for the Hurricane Ian and Nicole recovery plan for Florida's Beach and Dune system, which was provided on December 9, 2022. We have heard verbally that we are receiving half of the allocation for South Bonita Beach. We have been in communication with Lee County about the portion that's managed by their erosion control contracts. And we're going to explore more opportunities to move forward with that. Our Representative Botana has suggested that because we understand that half of that money is coming forward, it would be appropriate to ask officially for the second half in the form of a written appropriations request, which would be approximately what would be $2,247,750. So that would be our other recommendation. And then last, based on your vote just a few minutes ago, we have been in communication with Hayden about this and Representative Botana. We understand that the FEMA dollars may be very challenging for the golf course, but in the essence that you now have a shovel-ready project, we would like to ask your permission to ask for 5.4 million dollars for the golf course from the legislature. And at that point, too, we would also ask Baron Collier if they would assist us with their lobbying as well for that appropriation.
Fabulous, excellent. All good news.
Mr. Mayor?
We need a vote. We need a vote because we'll be filling out those forms.
Make the motion, do what you want.
Yeah, I don't have any, no opposition to that. I had, it's not even an addendum, but I thought I'd just like to make sure Hayden heard last meeting when I said Lover's Key supposedly a year and a half to two years away. Is there somebody in the legislature that's in the process of trying to figure out that opening? Because it's the second most visited state park in the entire state and it's in Bonita. So, I mean, I'm not saying I reallocate all of our effort there, but there should be some effort to try to get it open quick.
So in this report, there's actually a specific allocation for Lover's Key and Bonita Beach Renewishment Projects. And so that is included in Lee County's project. Matt was communicating with them. They didn't, they of course appreciate our support, but they felt that they were able to significantly.
They've shared with me, so that project that Arlene's talking about covers Lover's Key's beach as well as a portion of our beach that Lee County handles for us through interlocal. They're going to ask for the remaining funding on that portion. And then what we're talking about is the area that's not covered by a beach renourishment project, the remaining portion.
Okay, cool. That's awesome. I'm good to go. I'm ready. Do we need a motion?
Need a motion or?
We do need a motion because.
I think Fred made it.
The motion is what again?
Authorizing the staff and the mayor to pursue and execute the appropriations request to both the Senate and the House.
Motion to approve that.
Sorry, I made a motion.
You don't have a second.
Yes, we do, we've got like eight seconds.
I know, we only have seven.
Any other comment?
Very familiar with it. Think it's great.
Sure, I'm going to go for it. Roll call, please, Debbie.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fulick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
My next item, if Lisa would come forward. We're going to provide an overview of the American Rescue Plan Act grant. And we have some recommendations for you and we would be asking for a formal action or formal vote this evening on that as well. Good evening.
Evening.
Hi, we're here tonight to.
And you're Lisa?
I am Lisa Robertson, for the record.
All right.
One of your staff members here. We are going to be talking tonight about the American Rescue Plan Act. We've discussed it several times before. We're going to summarize and review, so if y'all be patient with us, we're going to review some of the facts that we previously presented to you so that we just give a full and complete presentation. The American Rescue Plan Act, under that, the city was awarded 7.24 million. That was designed and approved in order to help response and recovery from the effects of the pandemic. And the city was one municipality of the whole nation that received some, everybody did, every municipality, excuse me. After they submitted the money to the city, they, being the federal government, gave us guidelines on how we could use it. And in their final ruling, I am so pleased to say, and I think I've let y'all know this before, a few months back, the final ruling significantly had a major simplification of how we can use the funds, which is just, they wanted to infuse cash into local government so we can use it where we needed it most, which is the greatest thing a federal program can do for us. Normally, it gets more defined and it's limited with respect to use, but this allows us to use it much more at our discretion, which is we know where we would like to allocate the funds or you all will decide going forward. The standard allocation was elected by the city so that we could claim revenue loss under the pandemic. The limit per the plan was up to 10 million. So which that means for the city is 100% of our 7.4 million can be used to fund governmental services. Governmental services under this act include any services traditionally provided by the government and less specifically excluded. Again, just a major simplification and a positive thing for us and all the other municipalities as well. Specific examples listed in the act were road building and maintenance and other infrastructure needs, general government administration, staff and administrative facilities, environmental remediation, police, fire, and other public and safety services, and any, again, any other government services not specifically included. I need to state that clearly because there's some things we cannot use this money for. And we get to that list now. These services were excluded from what can be allowed with this government, with this act, excuse me. Depositing into pension funds, settlements or judgment payments, debt service or replenishing reserves. These are, again, these are things we cannot use the funds for. Rainy day fund allocations. And it was specifically stated that we could not use them directly or indirectly to reduce net revenues for the cities during the period under which the grant is being applied to us. That being said, they also said that we could use it for grant matching. Again, just broadening the areas where we could use these funds. So under the revenue loss election, which we made, you can use this for non-federal cost sharing or matching requirements under federal programs. The timing of expenditures, it had a very narrow or well, very specific window of time under which you could spend these funds. They began March 3, 2021, and you continue until December 31, 2024. As previously directed by City Council, staff has developed a list of contractual governmental services provided by the city during the allowable time period. This graph actually shows the type of services that are eligible, staff has identified that are eligible. These are contractual governmental services that you have paid for under the time period. Animal control services, transportation, public safety, natural resources, and planning and zoning services. Tonight, we're requesting direction to submit these eligible governmental services for reimbursement. These reimbursed funds will then be available to use by you all for future governmental services, including capital projects or however you all would like to. And again, it's just a good news item. We did want to mention one of our community, one of our CIP projects in the budget currently for technological infrastructure planning. It was identified specifically broadband. That is still in the budget, it's for 250,000. Now, what we're able to do with this, we'd like to ask your permission to please just go ahead and get reimbursement. So that general fund money could this fund this project. It's eligible. But this is, you rarely get an opportunity with grants for them to be simple. Let's be honest. I mean, FEMA, you know, has stepped in and helped lots of people, wonderful, but it takes about five years to project to, it took us about five years. We're still wrapping up Irma grant. And I mean, nothing against it. We, you know, federal government steps in, they help us with money. We're doing, hopefully we'll do great things with it, but it's time-consuming. This is a rare chance to simplify this and just infuse this money back into being able to help us do things as we need to going forward. So we'd like to open it up for discussion and look for direction from you all.
Go for it.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve reimbursing our expenditures as laid forth in your chart.
Second.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fulick?
Aye.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Purdon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Now, we are on update regarding Hurricane Ian recovery. If I may, I'm going to ask John Dolmer to come up. We want to give you an update on where we are with permitting and some schedule adjustments we want to talk through with you all. So you have that update as well.
Okay, yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. John Dolmer, Community Development. We've been a little bit busy since the storm. Couple of people come through the lobby. We've done approximately 1,000 Irma, or Irma, Ian-related permits. Those have equaled somewhere in the neighborhood of about 1,200 inspections. And we have waived approximately $117,000 in building permit fees associated with those permits. The problem has come, we are also at a time where, year to year, we are 212 building permits over where we were last year. That doesn't include engineering permits or planning and zoning permits. So one of the reasons I asked to come up here to speak with you tonight was because we are trying to work those permits through the system, it's taking a very long time. People are in the lobby for longer than we want them in the lobby and longer than they want to be in the lobby. So the request I have for you would be to modify, at least for the time being, our lobby hours to be from 9 until 4. Currently, they're from 8 until 4:30. The reason I'm asking this is because I could bring in permit technicians at approximately 7 o'clock in the morning. They can work until 9 on permits entered and getting things, permits ready to issue, work through our day. I could have two additional permits stay, our permit technicians stay until 6 o'clock. So we'd have two additional hours to work on processing permits after the lobby is closed. The purpose of this is to reduce the wait time that people have when they're in the lobby and to kind of move our permits faster. We have a conference room full of permits that are ready to be issued, but someone has to go in and enter that data into our permit tracking system. And until that data is issued, those permits can't be picked up. So we want to get those out. We want people to be working. We don't want them to be waiting on a permit. We're also going to start opening, putting a box together so that, similar to COVID, if you want to submit one of those permits that's Ian-related, because there is no fee associated with it and the plans that are required are very limited, you could just drop it in the box and we will email you the permit when it's processed, hopefully during some of this time that we have when the lobby is closed. So we are slowly working to dig our way out of this surge in permits. And I don't know how long it will last. Otherwise, I would say we would need it for a certain period of time, but I don't know. I think I told several of you, our last Irma permit that we waived the fees for was two weeks before Ian. So we may be in for a while, I don't know. But if there are any questions or comments or thoughts, I am definitely open to those.
That's my comment. I get a lot of people say, I can't get a permit, I'm waiting on a permit, I'm waiting on a permit. I said, gee whiz, I'm glad you're addressing the problem and it's going to get better. And thank you, thank you, thank you.
Well, God willing.
Say, Mr. Mayor, the, I had a communication with Lee County earlier this week. They have 15,000 permits in related to storm, another 7,000 that they're just trying to process. And they, this week, actually today, started closing their lobby on Wednesdays, one day a week, just to be able to help process. This is much in line with what's going on in the area.
Okay, I hope there's progress.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't need, I don't think I will leave a motion. I think I see general direction that we're going to move forward. And John will be able to provide monthly updates on where we are with permitting at council meetings.
So you know.
All four?
I do have a question. Are you going to prioritize so the folks who are doing the 7 to 9 permits are the ones who are going to be coming into the lobby at 9 o'clock? Will you know that?
So for those permits, we're trying to actually avoid having them come back in. So if they leave email addresses or their contractor's email addresses, the permit will be emailed to them along with their inspection card.
That day?
Well, when it's, when it's issued. Yes, ma'am. So hopefully, it's a lot sooner from the time they submit it than it is today.
No, I just was asking if we needed a motion.
No, I think I had direction.
Other comments, questions?
I'm all in favor.
I am too. I think that's a good idea.
Yes, sir.
John, will this give you back that conference table that I saw that was piled like that?
That's the plan.
Okay.
Thank you. I would like Matt to give you an update on the wrap-up of the debris removal as well.
So we did conclude and signed off on debris removal operations, the city portion. So it concluded on January 27. Our contractors actually hauled off all of the trash out of the coconut area. What you may see coming in are projects that are really not the cities. There's, there's still some, there were some state authorized projects where the state is using the same contractor on specific properties. But as far as the city of Bonita Springs is concerned, our, our operation has ceased.
Great.
We moved 250,000 cubic yards, if that means anything to you, off the streets.
18 yards per truck.
Uh, no, no, the trucks. The question was how many yards per truck? The big trucks that you see, the 10, they consider each, the trailer is a unit and the truck is a unit. On average, you know, if you combine those, I think it's about 160 yards or just a little bit shy.
Still a lot of trucks.
Additionally, additionally, I wanted to give an update that we received information that the Hurricane Ian Recovery Reimbursement Grant Program is live in the DEP portal. This is for residents with private beach access. It's a 50% match. We have sent that to the president of the Bonita Beach Association to give them the information. We are also going to be providing this link on the city's website as well.
Okay, here it is.
Yes, sir. So one of the emails you received this afternoon, and at a later date, we'll have a presentation on it. We have been informed by the Blue Zones Project that our community is, it's all of Southwest Florida, includes portions of Collier County, Astero and Bonita, has been recertified as a Blue Zone community as well. So at a future time, we'll have Sean Gibbons with Community Development kind of walk us through our participation in the program and the benefits of it as well. But it is a pretty significant recognition for Southwest Florida, as there's only a few communities in the country that are, or one, we're the one ones.
World.
World certified, so. Also, Bonita Springs Utility has shared with us that Saturday, February 4, from 10 to 2, is a open house for all members. They would like to express their invitation to City Council and members of the public. So we'll be sharing that information as well. And last, I would like to ask you all for an opportunity. And as in the past, we would set up workshops either directly following a City Council meeting or before the evening meeting to break apart each of the strategic priorities and work through the capital improvement projects. I would like to ask for the first one to be on stormwater. And if it's feasible, we could do it after the last council meeting.
Okay.
Need a motion for that?
No, I just need to give you direction and then we'll advertise the workshop.
Which defines the last council meeting?
I'm sorry, the next council. You're asking for the next council meeting, which is.
Next.
Correct.
I thought you said last. Thank you.
What I was saying is we typically do them right, directly following the council meeting. Or if it's an evening council meeting, we would do it at 4 o'clock before the 5:30 meeting.
Okay, you're done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mayor and Council reports. Fred, you got anything for us tonight?
Yeah, there's two things I was going to report on. I was at the state MPO meeting yesterday. And basically, they announced there ahead of time what was announced today, that I-75 is going to be widened to 10 lanes from Golden Gate Parkway to Corkscrew Road. It's going to cost a ton of money, somewhere around 500 million bucks. That's, that's big money to me.
Is it your money? My money?
It's all our money.
It's everybody's money.
It's everybody's money. And then, then the other thing that they announced, which is, I was telling Matt and Arlene earlier about, but they have announced that they're going to be sending money to do analysis of grants that can be done to make a road or a sidewalk or a bike way that we're doing more safe. So like, I'll give you a hypothetical. Let's suppose Matt has a project that's 200,000 bucks. If we spent another 50,000 on it, it would be a lot safer. So we would be able to go in to get the grant for 50,000, not the 250, but the thing that makes it extra safer.
Who sponsored that?
It's coming from the state, from FDOT. And they're going to get a planning grant right away and then do some implementation grants as well. More, more information.
Got a good grant writer. I know that. Okay, yes, Jamie, something?
I do not.
Okay, Jesse, how about it?
No, I just want to thank Baron Collier because I think this was such a long time coming. And this was something that I originally, on the last council, was somewhat critical of, simply because the price tag was so large. But, you know, upon going through this with them and all of the concessions that they made and the reality that these were expensive infrastructure projects we were going to have to do independently, having a partner in them who's going to handle all of that for us is just such an affordable way to do what we needed to do with, with people who really took a lot of concessions they didn't have to. And I think it, it made, the hurt that any of the citizens are going to feel mitigated. And really, the benefits for everybody are way bigger. So I mean, I'm somebody who's, you know, converted, I guess you could say, on this project. And I'm, you know, I'm proud of where it went. And thank you to Baron Collier for getting it there.
Nigel, you have a comment tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. Two things. One is I had a great conversation this morning with Matt Caldwell, our property appraiser. And we were discussing the fact that a lot of the people that are getting the notices about what they're doing for property taxes are not the people that need it the most, meaning the refunds on taxes either because their mailboxes aren't there, they don't have time, they're not watching television or reading the newspaper. And so Matt and I talked about the fact, wouldn't it be great if we did some workshops here in Bonita, but after hours, like at 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, where working people can come and get some advice and direction? He's all in. He said he'd provide his staff, be happy to do it. So I'm asking council if they would, if you all would feel comfortable asking staff to coordinate with Matt and his team to do three or four of these evening seminars. I reached out to the Center for the Arts and they actually said they would make the MO auditorium available for a couple hundred bucks. And I'm sure we can find facilities like that where we'd have the audio visual. And if, actually, if anybody's got a problem about it, I'll pay for it, my district. I think it's important. I really do.
Is this premature?
No, we probably should have done it a month ago. This is letting people know what they can do to alleviate their tax burden and get refunds if they're available to them. Folks don't know it's there. And we do have people like myself who weren't that IT literate. So having the ability to have somebody tell them, here's step-by-step what you do. We're going to help you out. Here's another thing, Mayor. People are getting their mortgages. The people who have mortgages are going to be getting statements from their lenders saying, your property taxes are going up. We want more money from you in your statements. They don't know what we're doing down here. They just know property values have gone up. That's a hardship. If we can alleviate that in any way, shape, or form, I think we should do it. It's not going to cost us anything. And we've got a property appraiser who's willing to provide the staff to do that with us.
Okay, well, how come it hasn't been broadcast?
Um, Ms. Mayor?
It has.
It has.
It has. But it's to people who are watching TV and going on the internet. People that are rebuilding their homes and their lives, they don't have time to look at that. This is us doing something where we can help people who really need it.
Yeah.
And Ms. Mayor, a comment?
Yes.
How I read it, it was also going to be determined by the state. We have no say.
County does.
Okay. When I read it from the governor, it was based on the state will let you know next year about taxes. I can send it to Debbie and she can, because it's from the governor.
So to clarify, I think, I think what Councilman Fuller was asking is there has been some outreach to folks for them to go through a process through Matt Caldwell's office to have their property taxes adjusted and how that is determined by the state at a later time. But they would have to get into the process as well to do that. And I understand, what I, what I understand the request is to ask staff to coordinate.
Correct.
With Matt Caldwell's office to find maybe Freeland, maybe City Hall, maybe the gym, azim, whatever, and allow his staff to come. It is an intergovernmental, so there's no contract required. It's, they're part of Lee County government. But you would, you normally typically approve uses of facilities. And also, you approve as a board, your staff's time in a direction to do.
Make the motion that we, that we.
I second that.
Thank you.
But details, that was in the detail. Mr. Mayor, may I say something?
Does it make any difference if I approve it or not?
I'd prefer not, but I know you prefer yes.
How many years you been interrupting? Go ahead.
So how many meetings, though? I mean, because I heard five, six.
No, you didn't. You heard three or four.
Okay.
And if we move them around the city, then we're reaching. It's just a reach-out program. It's all it is. Giving people information that they desperately need and the people who desperately need it the most.
This is, is your house is unlivable? I had, I called the property, I think it was the property appraiser's office and reported, you know, he had a couple months to tell them that your house was unlivable.
They sent letters out.
I got an email because I showed it to Arlene.
There's still time to do it.
I understand there's still time to report to Matt Caldwell's office. I think what I understand is it's not a guarantee that you're going to get approved. It's just an opportunity for citizens to get the information.
Let's not fight about it. Let's just do it.
I think that's a good idea.
All right, second. Ready to go?
I just hope we can get some more information. I, as far as I'm concerned, you know, I can't, I'm still homeless. You know, it's been six months or whatever.
Mr. Mayor?
I take one of the tax.
So we need a motion?
We have a motion and a second.
And a second. And we'll decide dates in the future.
Right. So let's call the question.
Great.
Councilman Forbes?
Roll call, please.
Councilman Forbes?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bogas?
Aye.
Councilman Pardon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Carr?
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier?
Aye.
Councilman Corey?
Aye.
Councilman Fuller?
Thank you. Yes, aye.
Okay. Well, let's see, who else? You got anything for us tonight?
No, I just want to extend thanks to city staff, especially Matt and Arlene with respect to the golf course resolution and moving forward on that. I know that I and a number of people north of Shangri-La, both Cockle Shell and Paradise have spent a lot of time on this, have had many meetings. And I think we have a solution that's, that's going to make it much better with respect to flooding. But I think there were a lot of people involved in coming to this solution. And it may not be perfect. It may not satisfy everyone. But it's a lot better than what we have now. So I want to thank everybody who participated.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Jesse's done. Laura?
Oh, I'm done.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I apologize. I had one other thing. It is just a request. I think everybody on council has been bombarded with emails from well-intentioned folks, many of them from Astero, and some of our own people asking for our opinions on Burt and what's going on. And my personal feeling is if we ask staff to craft a, one voice response from council that we could send to folks, why are we responding to people in Astero? And I don't know if I'm off-base on that, but I don't think we should be responding to Astero residents.
Well, Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, I sort of agree with you there. They're selling T-shirts like crazy. I asked them to start a fundraiser. You know, they're too busy selling T-shirts. This is premature. I guess Astero had a meeting today with Burt. I don't know. Are you, are you forward?
What I'm saying is.
You get the same emails that I get.
That's what I'm talking about.
And you, I send mine to Debbie over there.
Our attorney raised the standard.
But if we're responding to them, which I'm not.
I'm not either.
But at a certain point, then we start to look bad because people say, well, they're, they're, they're not responding to us. And when they say us, people don't know if it's an Astero resident or a Bonita resident. I think our Bonita Springs residents are happy with our response. We've done everything we can so far. I'm asking, instead of people sending out individual emails with our opinions, if we send out one?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, may I, may I add a comment? I think, I think that what, what the heart of, what Councilman Fuller's getting at is the proprietary nature of the council in Bonita weighing in on a consideration for the Astero council to consider. Obviously, there's support from the residents of Bonita and the city council to construct the portion of the project that is in Bonita. But we, as, I'm sure that we would not appreciate the Astero City Council, Village Council weighing in on Bonita items that are within Bonita. I think what he's asking for is can staff put something together, put it on the website, or give a canned response that we can put back when, when residents from another community respond? That's all I think he's asking.
I must, I have responded to some of them saying that Astero is not in the city of Bonita Springs. I can't tell Astero what to do. Benita Springs. I can't tell Astero what to do, and they're not trying to tell us what to do.
But we're all, Mr.?
Yes.
I, I would just say that I understand Nigel being new, how it feels to ignore those because we've had, at least on Coconut Road, this is going to, there's always issues with Coconut Road and Astero, and you're going to, Astero's going to bomb you with the, with emails all the time. And it goes against our nature to ignore them. But at the end of the day, they're trying to affect our policy from an astero-centric standpoint. So I don't let that even into the equation. But I understand what you're saying. You want to be able to give them something that we're saying, hey, we hear you. It's not our place. Thank you.
This is what we're doing as a city.
Right.
Whatever happens in Astero, please direct your attention there.
Okay. What exactly are we doing here in the city?
We moved to explore what the opportunities are at our last meeting.
We didn't do a resolution. No, we, they didn't want a resolution, but we support what Don Scott and Burt are doing. And we think that it's important that something be done with that railway corridor that would improve life in Benita Springs. So I didn't hear any opposition to that, so we're supporting it.
And we've put money in. We've put money in. So I mean, that says their support.
Mr. Mayor?
So we've put money in already for this in the past. I mean, a number of, at least twice. So I mean, like that, that's already publicly saying, hey, we support it, or we wouldn't have never put money away. We all voted on that in the budget. So I mean.
Long time ago, yes.
Mr. Mayor, yes. Okay. I too received hundreds of emails, actually four emails from over 300 different people. It would be nice if they had been all coordinated, and I would have responded. So I did send to the Burt, which is Benita Astero. So Benita's name, Burt is, and we are obligated, if you look at the Rails to Trail, at FDOT, $70 million, I think. So there's, there's, it's all broken down, but there's no money for this project. The money that we spent, as Jesse talked about, was for a study, a feasibility study. And that's it. There's no further money that's available. There's no further money sources, so i.e. no grants that are happening right now. There is a, a new concern with MPO and FDOT about the ADA accommodations at bus stops that takes priority. And this is a huge, and then there's another party working on buying, right away, the, the, third, and there's no money for even if they make a deal, that there's money. So there's no money available for the future of it. So we all have to just chill a little bit and see. And I live in a gated community. So I personally would not be in favor of somebody saying, oh, well, but, you know, there's a road or a transgress or a railroad check that's not being used, and we're going to send people through. So I, you know, also have issues with the fact that there's going right through private property. And I went to, I think Fred also went, not together, but at a separate time, and Jamie was thinking about going. And it is so dangerous where this railroad tra, you know, trail is, because cars come across it. I mean, they're golf carts, but they're still cars. And they trans, they transgress it all the time. Oh.
I just, no.
Oh, okay. And so it is just something, but it isn't in the near future. But I do believe that the vines have offered an, an alternative to going through their property, that if it is extended past Astero Parkway, perhaps that's the way to go. But again, there's no money allotted for any futures on this particular project. And they don't believe the railroad is going to be realistic in its negotiation.
Who's saying that?
MPO.
Okay, let me get, let me get Jamie in here.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I'm like Nigel, have had a zillion emails, and there are a lot coming from Astero. And I think all he's asking is if we can have an email drafted where it's sent out or publicly put, where we're not feeling like we're just ignoring everybody. I know you said, but, but as new, we feel like, I mean, I'm getting hundreds. And, and then I got to figure out who's Astero, who's not. And I just feel like if we had something drafted, I think it's a great idea. And that's all Nigel I feel is asking for.
Thank you, Councilwoman. That's all I was asking for, Mayor, is just a response to people. I'm not asking to discuss funding and disagree with Councilwoman Carr, but I'm sure we can discuss that at another date.
Right.
There's money being looked for for the project, not necessarily from us, for purchasing it, and it may be up there. But again, I'm just asking that we respond to people who are addressing us as the city of Benita, period. And just one voice.
Well, I've already sent out to everybody that's response, sends a email. Not, but I've had Arlene look at it, Matt's looked at it, Don Scott's looked at it. It's okay. And I'm basically saying what the mayor's saying, the money isn't there right now. It's a long process. The last thing you want to do is can do anything to the concept where you say, you can't do this, but we support it, because that cuts the funding.
Done.
Once the funding's there, it'll be worked on. But this thing about a road and a crossing, how many people?
I don't know why we're getting to the minutia here.
How many people played on a golf course where they had a tunnel under the road?
Why are we getting to the minutia of this right now?
We're not. I'm not.
So let's just respond with one letter from everyone.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that. Because I have my opinion. You have your, I think you can have one if you. I don't think we came to an agreement as to what the city, where we stand on this.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have an idea. Nigel, you as a city council person have the right to speak to our city attorney and have them draft something for you, similar to Fred's. If you like, then you can copy and paste it to anybody who emails you. Then we don't all have to agree as a board. You still get what you want.
Yeah. What do you think, Mr. Attorney?
I am fine with it. I, I, obviously, I understand all the issues. I, I think the concern I would have, just given other times that this city council has been act by other communities to act on something for them, that you can have a voice of, I don't know if the project will ever go forward. You can have a voice of, we have supported for Benita. Astero council will support what they need to do, but you, you would probably not like Astero council weighing in individually or collectively on something in Benita Springs. We've seen how this has worked with Collier County. We've had issues in the past with Astero. So I, I would just, we can be sympathetic to, you know, the vines and other communities, but I do see that there's a possibility there. So I, I will work on some language and share it with the councilmen, and then I can share it with the rest of the council to see if they want to, if they agree.
I, I've also sent them, and I said, well, I don't have $100 million. You know, I, I, it'd be nice if it was all done and all, and being used, and if somebody maintained it. But that's so far down the road. I, I don't think the people are going to willing to come up with $28 million, or whatever these numbers are. I don't think we have a, any idea what this thing's going to look like in the future. I, I'm big on parks. Don't get me wrong. I like parks. The people, you know, don't live in it where they have all the amenities and swimming pool and tennis courts and all this. The other people, they need open air, green space, place to exercise. And it's, I, I love parks. But this is, is too out in the area. I, I can't take a stand on it, except I don't have the money. I don't have, you know, we have a gated community that's completely against this. Now, they must have got a good price when they bought that property, because the railroad track went through it. It was still operating in those days. Maybe we could run a railroad back through there, and they won't, they beg us to put a bike path in there. But that's my opinion.
Again, I didn't.
So anyway, Nigel, you get, you get any satisfaction out of it?
I kind of did. I just did not mean to this become a discussion about Burt. I meant to just say, when we're responding to the public, would be better if we responded with one set of facts. And if people have opinions.
We don't have one set of facts from seven people.
Well, we do. We, this is what we've done so far, and this is what we're doing.
What have we done so far?
We're exploring the opportunity.
Okay.
As a city.
That's it.
So, right. That's what I, that's how we respond to people.
Okay, that's fine. But don't.
I'll be contacting you for that letter. Thank you.
All right. We're exploring. You know, that's about as, about as clear as mud, yeah. That's not committal.
We sat through a presentation that I thought was pretty darn well done about the probability, possibility of getting it funded, making it happen. And if it happens, I'm all for it.
I think we're as well positioned as Sarasota.
Yeah.
And what they did with the Legacy Trail. I mean, it's not impossible. So I think we need to, you know, look, explore and not be trapped into our thinking that it's, there's not the money. There are, there are sources of money to get this done. So let's just be a little more optimistic. It's always easier to be against something than it is for something. So. Well, as, as the whole thing was the Astero, all the people from the Astero Country Club. It's not our problem, Mayor. It's their problem. All right. So how do we handle that problem? We don't. That's Astero's problem. We do these emails. Send them to, send them to Debbie. That's what he's asking for. Let's move on.
That's what I'm asking for.
So you're asking for, let her say we're, we're studying it.
Mr. Mayor, I think everybody's, Chris, did you have something more to say?
No.
I think we have, I think we have direction. We know.
No, I don't have anything more to say. Okay. Yeah. Well, Sarasota, you know, they raised the taxes, and now they're paying for, for 30 years, they're paying for this. They borrowed the money. The people voted on it. For 30 years? That's what they voted on. So the people got what they wanted. Yeah, okay.
Seventy, 70% of the people voted.
Seventy percent of the people voted. It carried 70, 30. So maybe we let the people decide. You talk about the people all the time. Let the people decide. Okay. Raise your taxes, folks. He's going to raise your taxes, not me. You're going to raise them on yourself if you want the project. That's an option. So. Well, let's see. We get to carry you along. We're studying.
We were just asking about an email. We can move on in a jury.
You spoke out of town.
I did.
You're a female, speaking out of town.
Yep.
Okay. Any, let's see, we got you. Everybody's had their chance to speak.
Public comment.
Huh? Public comment. There's Burt?
I have a lot of videotape that we made.
Yeah, because we already put it in our website.
I'm Donna Peranto, and I live on Maddox Lane between the golf course. And just sitting here, having you talk about Burt is wonderful. I think it's great. I wrote to everyone here, and I wrote to everyone in Astero. And I told them I was from Benita Springs, and I just wanted to voice my opinion. And all I wanted back was a thank you. So if that's all I get from one of you, I did get an email back from two of you. And that's all we want, is to be heard. So if you can just say thank you for your email, that's enough. Thank you.
Mayor, council members, me again. For the record, Dwight Usman, Paradise Road. I wrote a lot of this before, in fact, I wrote all of it before tonight. And I want to say the discussion that you just had was one of the best discussions I've ever heard from this council. You actually debated something. You've probably heard the saying, you can't fix stupid. Well, none of you or none of us are stupid. We're all here because we care about this city. But it's also true, to learn something, you have to read or listen to new information. For four years, I've watched city government very closely. Every council person says they want citizen input, and that you want to represent everyone. But it doesn't seem that some of you really hear us when we speak. You meet, you meet personally with developers and staff, and some of you have even met personally with me. But too often, I feel that you believe the developer and the staff are better informed, and that I am biased. The staff is probably guilty of telling you what you want to hear. Every employee I've ever known, including me, do that so we keep our jobs. The question you should be asking is, what's the best way to do this? Is this the best we can do? I want to make it real clear that Chris Corey is an excellent counselor. We don't always agree on everything, but he's spent untold hours talking with me, and so has Matt Feeny. Someday, somewhere, he's going to make a great city or county manager. There's always two sides to a story, maybe more. And the answer is generally somewhere in the middle. But I rarely hear discussion or debate, and no explanation of why you vote for or against something. Sometimes you say that many people have told you how they feel, but are they coming to the meetings? Do they really understand the issue? Too often, when you do comment on issues, you insult other counselors or citizens. Your meetings are not seven people reaching a consensus. There's seven people who've already made up their minds before the meeting started. I understand that the sunshine laws and Robert's rules make it difficult, but you need to try. I always think I'm right until I realize I was wrong. I thought I was such a good salesman that if I put my time and knowledge to work, I could mobilize a movement. But I wasn't good enough. I did try. You have the power to make lives better, at least in Benita Springs. Reagan said government is the problem, but he was wrong. Bad government is the problem. Good government can be the solution. And if you don't agree with this, why are you in government? I've said to people, our city spends money like drunken sailors on shore leave, but that's an insult to sailors. They're spending their own money. I think we waste a lot of tax money, but Chris tells me I don't understand how, how government works, and he is probably right. Again, I don't hear you question the cost of anything very often. And you don't do a lot of long-range comprehensive planning for the future. All of you know me. You know that I've researched any issue that I talk about. You almost never ask me a question, or ask the presenter a question that I've suggested you ask. And it's not just me. It's the same with virtually every citizen who speaks. Don't we have a right to have our questions answered? When I heard this issue about the golf course was going to come up in February, I me, I emailed all of you. I asked you to consider five things. The two most important were, the rainfall totals for the 100-year storm have been the same since 1980 or before. Whatever the reason, storms are getting stronger, quicker, and dumping more rain. And what happens if the state requires a B map for spring creek? Please discuss and debate these before it's too late. Share your thoughts and ideas with each other and with the public. Try for a consensus. It won't always happen, but you should try. Compromise is good. This deal is done. But you have to plan for the future. There's another saying, you can't fight City Hall. Maybe it's true. I tried. I lost most of the battles, but won a few. Maybe I will win this one, to get you to show each other and the citizens a little more respect. But now, it's time for me to take a break. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwight.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, city council. My name is Kyle Moran. I'm a 30-year resident of the city of Benita Springs, and I want to thank you all for doing a really great job on behalf of our city. That extends to staff, too. I think today, sitting in the audience, we saw a great example of the city functioning really well. It's amazing to see citizens that are going to lose their view, the reason they moved to a home, lose their view, stand up and say, I'm proud of this project, and thank you for all, working with the private sector, but working with staff, and working through this with a lot of experts and consultants to finding a better outcome. It's a, it's another sign of our city functioning really well. Government light doesn't have to be government inefficient. It's often very efficient. We've seen a great recovery from Hurricane Ian, among other things. We've seen great progress in the downtown area where I spend a lot of my time. By the way, intense debate is a sign of a vibrant democracy. So let's not forget about that. But democracies are very messy sometimes. But we need, what we need to focus on is where we end up at the end. And the results have been really great there. So I appreciate that. I heard a sentiment last week, or sorry, last council meeting that has really stood out to me. We heard a little bit more about it today, too. The city was facing some pressure from another community to make sacrifices here that would potentially benefit that other community. And a member of your council said something very poignant and very clear, which is to say, we will listen to other communities. We will hear what they want. We'll try to accommodate that. But at the end of the day, we do what is best for Benita. We've done a lot of great for Benita across this town, and particularly in the downtown, where we have tried to foster community and commerce. Some of the things that we've done in that downtown actually run counter to what other communities want. If you look at that downtown, it's always ever been a throughway. It's been a place for big, heavy trucks to get from Fort Myers to Naples. I heard a statistic from the Naples City, Naples Chamber of Congress, Commerce. Every day, 48,000 people migrate into Collier County to go to work. And the vast majority of those are coming from the north. 48,000 people. Benita's a border town. Benita's a throughway. If Fort Myers and Naples and the state of Florida and the FDOT had their way, they would make us a more efficient highway. We fought a flyover. We resisted it. They wanted to put a flyover of Benita Beach Road. We resisted and we won. At this very minute, FDOT is pitching a plan for that southern stretch of Old 41 to put this plan in place that will block Johnny Malloy's Plaza, there goes our commerce, that will turn the entrance to Marbella into a Collier-bound truck turnaround. There goes our community. We are resisting that, and we will win. And I think it, because it's best for Benita. And I think we also need to resist having heavy commercial truck traffic go through our downtown. It's destructive and damaging to our downtown. And that downtown is the best hope, to end the throughway, and to build a great destination for all ages, for all hours of the day, for commerce and for our community. How to get there is beyond me, but thankfully have experts and a great staff. And I urge you to get those experts and get that data, and let's work this out. There are a lot of things we can do. We have a lot of north-south. They're expanding 75. We have ways to move people at the downtown, starting at Terry and Benita Beach Road. I'm going to go over, if I could have 30 seconds, I'd really appreciate it. We can move people at Benita Beach Road and Terry Street to east-west. As far as compliance and regulation, we can put up signs. We can ask the Sheriff's Department to every couple of months, do some type of stoppage and, and inform people. I really believe that these trucks don't want to violate city ordinances, and they will adjust. We just need to change those patterns. We need time to advertise that downtown is for pedestrians, and to grow business there. And this, people won't, trucks won't want to go there because the businesses will there. And there are four common sense exceptions that we can make in that area to allow locals to use that area. So local deliveries and pickups, if you live locally, if you're getting local repairs, or if you have a bona fide commercial lot. So I really appreciate you for allowing me to go over. I really appreciate all you do for this city. Let's make our downtown a great destination and move forward with making down, our downtown pedestrian-friendly. And let's do it, because it's what's best for Benita. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think all of staff.
Just very quickly, again, Ben Hirschen, and I just want to say something. There's probably nobody in the whole city of Benita Springs, and perhaps the whole of the United States, who are not shocked based upon what we heard about some police in Memphis. I just want to take a moment. I've been here now 18 years. And the first, one of the first questions I asked was, where's the police? And I learned, well, it was the Sheriff's Department. I've had a lot of interactions, by the way, and I'm not pulled over, nothing illegal, but problems in my own neighborhood. but problems in my own neighborhood. And I have to tell you, and I watch, you know, I see the programs that the sheriff's department has for kids. We've got, we've got the best of everything here. And I just want to say a positive note. Gentlemen in the back, thank you for your service. And to all of the officers, every single time, I've seen them in action. They smile, very much people-related. They want to talk to the people in the neighborhood. So, I'm grateful for that, and I want to thank the sheriff comment. Absolutely. You've got a great bunch of people. And I'm very grateful that I've chosen to live here for the rest of my life. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ben. Anybody else? Did you have something to say now? Any more comments? Laura?
I'm done.
You're finished.
Thank you, sir.
All right. We're out of here.